Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Select Board meeting, March 19. And we remind everybody that we video-record this. And we start with a moment of appreciation for our troops who are serving. Thank you, everyone. Our first appointment is with Belleforge on citizen's petition, sale of land, Medfield State Hospital Chapel. Welcome, Jean.
Thank you. So thanks for the opportunity to talk about it and hear about any questions or concerns that you might still have. Jerry and Pat are here from our board, and our project manager Ray is also here in the back row. We're here to talk about the warrant article that would effectively, if it passed, authorize the Select Board to negotiate the sale of the property that is currently leased by Belleforge. We want to acknowledge and know that a positive vote certainly doesn't compel the Select Board to act. That is just an authorization, and that if it did pass, there would still be another step required in terms of legislative approval and a home rule petition. But essentially, if both were positive, it would essentially just set conditions for a sale if and when you agreed that was in the interests of the town. Hopefully, we would agree that the hospital project's probably going to be one of the most complicated construction projects within the town. On top of that, Belleforge has some pretty sophisticated acoustic requirements, and I think we can all imagine they'll be unknowns in terms of how construction happened 125 and 120 years ago that we can't quite anticipate yet. But we believe that a sale would provide significant benefits, both to the town and to Belleforge. So for Belleforge, it's really about more options to select the best contractors and subcontractors for the various trades, scope of their work, and minimize some of the risks in terms of cost overruns and delays. For the town, the benefit would be realizing more revenue than would be available, more revenue through a sale than would be available through the lease. And I think we could all probably agree that we want these buildings to stay as a public amenity for the town. And I think there are ways that, through a sale, we could secure that as an amenity in perpetuity. So a little bit of context for anybody that's not as familiar with Belleforge. We've been running programs since '22 outside April through October. We had 10,000 visitors in the first year, 7,000 visitors in the second year, but we lost a third of our programs to the rain. We did, however, see people from every New England state and over 380 Massachusetts zip codes. I guess, no, that's not just Massachusetts, that would be altogether. Belleforge will be investing $30 million in this project. That is an escalation from a $20 million cost estimate we had done during the pandemic. This will be funded through private donations, some foundation support, and through historic tax credits. We expect to receive $5 million in total from the federal and the state governments. The state of Massachusetts has already committed $2 million in historic tax credits to this project. And despite this cost escalation, we will not ask the town to fund any part of this project. Really, what we're asking for is flexibility to access a process that would be better aligned with the historic preservation. It's not a straightforward new construction. Even our new construction has to take into account the historic assets that already exist on the project. I've mentioned the sensitive acoustics. We also think that there's likely to be some heightened requirements for craftsmanship. If anybody was inside the chapel before the remediation, you would have seen that there are no 90-degree corners in the building. All of the plaster was rounded and molded on every edge in this facility. So far, we have reached 53% of our fundraising goal. That's a little over $13 million pledged of the $25 million required. Plus, the $5 million in tax credits gets us up to that $30 million. Since clearing that 50% threshold and now also wanting to start construction in a year, this was the time to have this conversation. At the time that we secured the lease, we were an all-volunteer organization with a $30,000-a-year budget. It felt far too risky to talk about ownership. Too risky for the town, too risky for the organization, quite frankly. But I want to recognize that the lease that was signed in 2020 was really the thing that allowed Belleforge to get off the ground. So to hire staff, to expand the board, to develop the community programs and the collaborations. And I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge the Select Board's support, Town Administrator, and the town of Medfield as a whole for that early support. So again, just to reiterate, that ownership that we are seeking is about providing flexibility in the process, in the construction process. Would allow us to seek general contractors and the subs who demonstrate successful collaboration on the historic preservation and performance basis. It would likely allow us to work more closely with Trinity, perhaps realize cost savings with material purchases. We certainly value their 35 years of experience in this space and the professional networks that they've developed over that period of time. Would also allow us to potentially hire local, hire specialists, hire union workers. Everybody could be invited to participate in that bidding process. We, again, would like to start construction in the spring of '25. We estimate a 16-month duration for our construction. That would allow us to open the doors in the summer of '26. There's some importance to that timing in terms of opening in advance of an academic season starting. Education will be a big part of our programming, so we'd like to be open before an academic year begins. Trinity is certainly aware of our timing and is as committed as they can be to providing the infrastructure to Belleforge to allow us to open on that schedule. We're also feeling some urgency getting to get started because of the partial floor collapse that has already happened inside the infirmary building, losing half of the first floor to the basement. So before those structural issues become any more pronounced, we'd like to address that. We are aware that the planning board would need to approve a site plan. Trinity and Belleforge have already agreed on what our site plan is, and Belleforge is much farther along in the process than Trinity is. Our construction documents are done, but we would be able to provide that as soon as we can once Trinity defines their space and it's agreed upon by the Select Board. We've done preliminary reviews with the Select Board, the Historic District Commission, and the Planning Board. We will come back around for another round of approvals once we have a better sense and a clearer sense of the timing for construction. I guess, in closing, we just would ask for, if it passes a town meeting, that you would accept that authorization to negotiate a sale, to advance it through the legislative review process as a home rule petition, and essentially just set the conditions for a sale that could be undertaken if and when you deemed it in the best interests of the town. So at this point, I'll stop talking and open it up for your questions, comments, and concerns.
Gus, do you want to start?
Jean, I think we've had four or five conversations, and my views haven't changed on this. But for the public, there are several considerations that go into my... The article can go, and if the town wants to authorize us to do something, from my personal standpoint, I have absolutely no intention of doing, then it doesn't matter. But you should understand, I, at least for one, have no intention of supporting this at this time. There's a couple, there are a number of reasons. Jean's heard them, and I think, Pat, you've heard them as well. My biggest concern right now, given the delay in Trinity's closure on our property, which is understandable, given circumstances, is to make sure that the Trinity project, or at least that we do everything in our power to ensure that the Trinity project goes forward. And that involves closure on the purchase of the campus property, which, at this point, is at least pushed out a year until next March. And I am not willing, I think the way I put it to Pat and Jean, is I'm not willing to change the gears and the watch in the context of what Trinity is doing for any reasons until we figure that out. This, Trinity is the dog, and I think this is okay. There's no derogatory comment here. Trinity's the dog, Belleforge is the tail, and I'm not willing to let the tail wag the dog. So my first issue around it is just I'm not willing to change the circumstances. My second issue around it is that I don't see any incremental value to the town to do this. There's no added benefit to this. There's no, there's probably, there's potentially no damage to the town unless the Trinity project falls through and suddenly the town has to rethink that property. And what I don't want is a piece of that property locked into something, and then we're trying to figure out everything else to go along with it. So that's the second reason that, in my perspective, I am highly optimistic Trinity is going to close and that that project is going to go forward on, unfortunately, a delayed schedule, but still going to go forward. But I cannot afford to not consider the possibility that won't happen when we are still waiting for it to happen. So I have to think about, what's the town going to deal with? If Trinity doesn't happen, what then? And I'm not particularly supportive of locking something in on one little piece of property that suddenly is an anchor around everything else. I just, I don't think it's in the interest of the town to do that.
So Gus, can I...
The other reason that I, the other is a practical reason. I am highly skeptical that the Massachusetts Legislature is going to pass special legislation to allow a project that's on former state property, then town property, then subsequently sold so that a project can be carried out without having to comply with prevailing wage. I, as a political assessment, I cannot picture the Massachusetts State Legislature doing that to unions in this state. That's got nothing to do with what I think about unions or whether that should happen. I just think that this is sort of a fool's errand right now. So those are, I think, I think I've covered most of... You've already heard this, so you already knew that, but people in the public have not.
Yeah. Can I, okay, if I pose a question to you, Gus?
Sure.
Yeah. So at this point in time, you know, where we are in this whole process, we don't know exactly how it's going to unfold, or, you know, what conditions are going to prevail, or whether there will be a strong case for this, or a weak case, or whether it's even feasible to do, you know, to achieve our ends through a purchase. But are you averse to having the option? You know, if there's like a non-zero chance that the stars line up, that this turns out to be a good idea, it doesn't hurt to have the option. The odds may be low, but it's...
Which the option you're talking about?
The option, so if the Board of Selectment is authorized to, I'm sorry, the Select Board, if the Select Board is authorized to do this negotiation, then it becomes an option. You can either do it or not, depending on whether, you know, you see a strong case in the future. So it does, I'm assuming it doesn't, you don't see it as hurtful to have the option, you know?
I am not prepared to support an option that I don't plan to act on. So if it passes, it passes, and if the town wants to give the Select Board the authorization to do something, what I don't want, and this is the reason I'm being so direct right now, is I don't want anybody in the town to think, because that article passed, suddenly you all, basically, you know, you approved that article, now you need to act on it. I'm not prepared to approve, recommend approval for the article because I have no good reason right now to ask the taxpayers here in town to authorize me to do something that I don't think it merits doing right now. If the town says, yes, but Gus, we just think you're such a good person. We want to give you all this extra authority, and then when the time comes, you can do it. I'm not going to lose any sleep over it, but I'm not going to represent to the town I think they should approve it because I have no good reason in my mind to ask them for that authority at this particular point in time.
Fair enough.
Jean, did you have anything you wanted to respond to Gus on?
Yeah, I wanted to ask you, Gus, is our lease at risk if Trinity falls through?
Your lease is at risk, no.
I asked if our lease is at risk if Trinity fell through.
No. But your lease has performance, there's performance parameters around what you have to do. If Belleforge suddenly turned into a, wanted to be the Medfield Zoo or something, we'd have a problem. But no, your lease is not at risk. I would turn that around to you, is if Trinity fell through, are there things that the town would do with that property as a consequence that would cause Belleforge to have to rethink? I can't promise you the surroundings will always be as supportive as a remediated campus will be. The place will be beautiful. And all my comments here, just to be clear, you started off, you know, appreciating the support. Jean, you've done yeoman's work. And the reason that I've been as strong a supporter of Belleforge, you've heard this already. It's not Belleforge, it's not the Board of Directors. The reason I'm supporting, have been supporting this is my faith in you. So all my comments here have to do with this one particular thing. None of them are reflective of any weakening of my support, my belief that Belleforge can be an incredible facility. I just don't believe right now, I can in good conscience say, I think it's in the town's best interest for me to try to get the town to do this because I don't think it's going to work. I don't, I just think it's the wrong thing to do, and I do think it introduces a potential added complication for Trinity at a time. I wish I could make some of the complications for Trinity go away. So it's just the way I'm reading it. It has nothing to do with either personal reactions to the people who are doing this. I have nothing but respect for what everybody's doing here. Has nothing to do with what I think Belleforge can be in this town. It just has to do with this one particular transaction, is one that I don't think is appropriate right now.
Eileen, do you want to?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, I know you guys are up against a clock because you've got to get to the warrant committee meeting, so I'm going to just say, everything that Gus said, I know I've had the same one-on-one with you. I think the world of Belleforge. You are doing your job as the Director of Belleforge to come and present this opportunity. As an elected official in Medfield, I feel it's my responsibility to make sure that I look out for the best interest of the town. And right now, as Gus said, Trinity is not locked and loaded. And until Trinity is locked and loaded, we don't, I don't want to put anything at Trinity at risk. I don't want any, I mean, I think for you guys, even going forward to go ask for loans, if I'm a bank, I'm like, well, what's going on over here? Until Trinity is locked and loaded, I'm concerned for you guys. So our focus right now is making sure Trinity happens. I don't see, you made a comment, maybe I misheard you because I can't hear that well, I'm on the mic right now. But I think you said something on the lines of, if this was to pass a town meeting, we would start acting as if you're going to say yes, paraphrasing. And I'm like, I don't want anyone going down that path. Like, right now, we, I'm going to not support this. I want to make sure that Trinity stays on track. I think that it doesn't inhibit you from moving forward. Yes, you've said a few times it may cost you a few more dollars, but like Gus said, and I've poked around in government, that I don't think the state's going to be thrilled that we're taking land that was once owned by the state and now transferring it and then not getting prevailing wages. I think that goes against everything what the state stands for, for unions. So I already want to set the premises that, like, that we get this approved. But I want to make sure that we're here, helping you as best we can. And it was only three years ago, a letter was written that this is a win-win. This is great for the town, this is great for both of us. And I don't see why, I don't see what the town benefits genuinely if we transition to the sale versus leaving it as a lease right now, leaving it at 99, and having you guys move forward.
So we'll go to Laurel next.
Oh, thank you.
Is it all done?
I've got another question, just like you had.
Oh, I thought you were done.
No, I am, I mean, I'll take the question. Obviously, I was saying something that was sparking questions, so.
I respectfully disagree with both of you. The leases, the lease, as you said, what would happen? Gus, I have heard you say that, you know, if something happened to Trinity, heaven forbid, I'm paraphrasing, we would lose Belleforge. And Jean?
I didn't say that.
Well, in the past, you have said...
I have never said that. Okay, let's just leave it at that.
With, I think you'd want to sell, quote, sell, the property to Belleforge because that assures you that Belleforge will be there. And that would be a plus for any, should Trinity fall through, you don't have to worry about Belleforge not being there or anything else happening. You have, they've got the property, they have the building, and they'll continue to do the fabulous job that they're doing. If there's any jeopardy with the lease, if Trinity isn't there, that's going to be taken off the...
There's no, I mean, there, the 99-year lease ensures they're going to, Belleforge will be there as long as Belleforge wants to be there. Within, at least for the next almost century. I don't think, I don't think there's a difference between either one of those. But...
Jerry Potts?
Jerry Potts, Seven Kerr Street. So a couple of things, you know, I think we all want Trinity to succeed. And I'm a taxpayer and a resident long before I got involved with Belleforge. I got involved six years ago because I thought this would be something great for the town, as most of us do. What I'm confused on is the same enthusiasm to do everything we can as a town to make Trinity succeed. Here, Trinity has come forward and, you know, asked for extensions, and we want them to succeed. And the town will do whatever we can to try to have them succeed. Belleforge is coming forward with, honestly, we're asking for the same thing that Trinity has, which is a purchase of the property. And three years ago, as Jean pointed out, we weren't in a position, it was a pipe dream. We were coming in, I mean, candidly, I don't know what you were smoking to say yes. We had nothing. We had $30,000 in revenue, and you believed in us enough to say yes. And now we're sitting here with over $13 million raised, and we're well on track to do it. But we were doing this before Trinity was ever selected. So we never did this, that was totally up in the air whether we would have a Trinity. But all along, we were going to have a Belleforge. And we've done that independent, I mean, we're moving along at a pretty rapid pace to be able to break ground next year. And we're asking you that this is important to us. It could be in the neighborhood of $3 million, not on prevailing wage, but just on time-to-market. If you look at MSBA, what we're talking about in the school, that extends projects a year to a year and a half. So getting involved in this process for a small organization, that's real money. And I guess what I'm confused about is we have a 99-year lease that is committing to this. And we're saying we need support, not asking for money. Still keep that, put all the provisions you want that it can come back to the town. I see no downside for the town, but we need help. And it's not asking for money, but we need a partner that can see the same future that you're giving to Trinity, which is purchase of it. And then the final thing I would say is Trinity has the same issue with prevailing wages, right? It's, and them purchasing that property, they're not going to be going out to town bidding, right? They're not going to be doing, so we're asking to be on the same footing as a large project that you've already approved. Nothing more. And the time period, the risk to the town isn't any different, but it helps us immensely in our process to be able to execute and deliver this dream, which, again, I hope you're as supportive of this as you are of Trinity because, honestly, we need the help.
Eileen, did you have anything more?
Can I, can I ask Jerry a question? You lost me when you said it wasn't prevailing wage, it was the time to get this done. Why, what is it about a 99-year lease that's making it take longer than a purchase would? If I understood what you said correctly.
Partnership to work with Trinity. Jerry, can you use the mic, please?
So as Jean pointed out, our ability to partner with Trinity. If we're going through a totally different bidding process for the construction that we're doing, saving money with, working with Trinity on the same contractors they're using, on the same supplies, on the same purchases, that's a lot of savings. And it's the same property that you're selling to them, using whatever contractors they use. We just want the same pay field.
Why can't you, so you're, when you're talking about supplies and things like that, I don't think prevailing wage is an issue there.
I'm saying negotiations would help us immensely to be teamed up with Trinity to be able to do the construction project and the selection.
If I can just interrupt for one second, and I know Trinity's not here to represent themselves, but in a recent meeting I have with Trinity, Trinity is planning on paying prevailing wage on this project.
And that's fine. Paying prevailing wages, and if we're working with the same, I don't want to make this a prevailing wages discussion. Time-to-market, decision-making process of being able to execute, it's faster being able to do it in the private sector. You're a private sector, you know, supporter.
But I don't understand the point. So Trinity, at this point, has delayed the closing for a year.
Exactly.
Your plan, I think, has always been to work in collaboration with Trinity. If anything, Trinity's going to take longer to do this project, but you're making the argument that you would be able to do it faster. Are you break, are you basically saying Trinity's delays are causing us to have to not do that? I don't, I'm...
Because you're not using the same contractors and everything. If I, if I heard you just say you want to break ground in 2025, we know for a fact that Trinity's not breaking any ground in 2025. We know that it's going to be another year after that, just based on permitting and different designs and whatever. So I can't even hear the argument that we're going to use their suppliers, their contractors, their, because you're not. You're going to, in theory, if what you're striving for is, you're going to be open a year and a half before they potentially ever come close to even plugging a light bulb in. So I just, I don't want to, I don't want to hear that as, that's why you're doing it. But I reading, I read...
I give another, a number of other points. I guess the biggest thing that I'm trying to say is, why not give us the same playing field for success that you're trying to give to Trinity? That, that's really...
And we're, we are, we, as a town, I was in the voting side of things out in the gymnasium, in 100% support of Belleforge. I sit up here tonight, I still support Belleforge. I don't think it's in the best interests of the town to change the lease we have right now. Like, let me ask you a silly question. Have you gone forward and done, sat with the bank, sat with some financiers, and laid everything out? Or are you assuming you have to have this as a sale before you can do that?
No, we have talked to Needham Bank, who's willing to make a loan. They won't yet talk to us about the total dollar or the terms because it's too early.
So let me ask you, it's, that kind of falls into why, I don't see why in May of 2024, the town, the Board of Selectment needs to support something that, if you haven't gotten there yet, I see a good 12 months of a lot of other activity going on. We could, it gives us more time to see what's happening with Trinity. Because, okay, in my business career, I did a lot of contracts. And the one thing I always was told to focus on is, don't focus on success. But when if it goes sour, you better make sure you have the right terms in place because that's what can cost your company a lot of money. That's what can really hurt the relationship. So I want you to be successful, but I have to look at this as something goes sideways. I need to protect the best interests of the town, in the chair I sit in, that we are flexible and we have the ability to do it. We need to do what's best for the town with that piece of land. Once we sell it, and I'll, you know, I'll go out on a limb, like, we sell it, and let's say MGM Fenway goes, oh, that's a sweet piece of property. They come to, you can, I'm just saying, like, it, once it's, once it's sold, it's sold. Right now, we can still help control what's happening up there by leaving it as a lease. And we're not hindering you from literally moving forward to do what you need to do. You may want some better conditions, and that's awesome. But at the end of the day, what you looked at, what you wanted to do three years ago, we're still enabling you to do that. We're not preventing you. You may want some better terms, and that's great. But I sit here tonight and I say, I don't see representing the town that we have to do this right now.
Except that it could take a year to get through the process.
And if that...
Which puts us right back in alignment with Trinity.
Well, and it's, but you know what? From a win-win perspective, we do nothing as a town, it doesn't hurt the town. You're saying it hurts you, right? I'm saying I don't want to hurt the town. You're saying you don't want to get hurt. And we've got to find a middle ground, which I think the middle ground is, we still support every letter you ask us to write so you can get, go for the different grants and whatever. We've done nothing other than sit here tonight and say, at Medfield's annual town meeting in May of 2024, when this comes up, I'll speak for myself, I won't be voting for it. Not, I will stand up, and you know I go to just about every event you have up there. I believe in what you're doing. I just have to look at what the town signed on for in 2019, what we asked the state to do in 2019, and it's three years later, and suddenly we're spinning this thing back. I just want to move forward and get it going. Doesn't mean we can't change things going forward. I just don't see the timing right now being necessary. That's...
Pat, go ahead.
So picking up on, because I look at this in a similar way. Eileen, it's like, you know, I've done a lot of projects that have, some have gone well, some have not.
Yeah.
One thing we've learned on a lot of projects, especially on the hospital one, is things have not unfolded as I would have predicted. I've been on this for 10 years, right? We, there's surprises, right? So I just look at this as a possible risk management tool that's available to the Selectmen. Like, we're talking about suppositions, about timing. It's all, it ain't going to turn out like we're talking about right now, right? So I, and I don't know that we get, need to get into the weeds here, but I can envision scenarios under which this will become important to Belleforge without being hurt to the town, and you might ultimately be persuaded that that's the case. And you don't, doesn't have to happen now. We can, it could be, you know, it's a common, you know, the stars lining up in all the wrong ways so that we're coming back and we're going, hey, we have a place for this. And you go, yeah, you're right, you know, so maybe we should look at it. So if you just have this, it's just another arrow in your quiver or, you know, an option in your pocket that you may or may not exercise in the future. And I think it would be kind of healthy to just view it in that light.
Eileen, anything else?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
So I'll tell you where I stand on this, which is that... So I'll tell you where I stand on this, which is that as a, an attorney, I see a 99-year lease and a, and a sale pretty much is the same thing. So I'm willing to entertain your, your warrant article and, and get the authority to do it. Obviously, there's devil in the details as to what goes along. There are a lot of terms that would have to be worked out, but, so my goal is to, the town has made it very clear, I think, to me, that they want to support Belleforge and to have you succeed. So that's part of my mission, is to have you succeed. And if you're telling me this will help you succeed, then I'm willing to consider it and willing to listen to what terms we can work out to make it work for you and for the town. So, yes, Mr. Judge?
Thank you. Dick Judge, at Juniper. I always like to let people know. In listening to everyone here, the townspeople thought so much of this idea of a, an cultural and arts center, that they were willing to put aside a couple of buildings for them to operate. Now, if they were told, you put it aside, but you're going to have to wait an extra three years for it to open, or two years, or whatever it's going to be, because we have to wait for this and that to happen. Even though we have the financing, or they've secured the financing, I'm sure the townspeople would, would say, well, this is a, a real jewel in the crown of this town, or, or can be, or will be. So let's get it done and let's collaborate instead of negotiate, because we are all one town. So in the, in the, with the idea, and Gus, that you brought up, that you're, you're voting against it no matter what. And that, that's fine, because I remember there were a couple of other projects in town you voted against and they've been very successful. Pocket Park, the, the rail trail, there were a lot of things that you oppose.
This is another inaccuracy, Dick. If the original cost of the Pocket Park, when I was on the Ward Committee, we said we were not willing to do that.
You opposed it.
Because it was the equivalent of building a house on a quarter of acre. Jean, to her credit, didn't just sit there and say then, to heck with you all. She went off, she figured out a different way of financing. And when that came back to the Warrant Committee for a lower level of town funding, I voted for it.
And exactly my point, that here she is making a presentation to you, that we have funding coming in and they, they will make adjustments as we go. So please don't take a firm stance against it until we can collaborate as a town and decide that this cultural center will do wonders for the town of Medfield. The value of everyone's house will go up. The, the cultural center will start to contribute dollars to the town of Medfield, whether it be for purchase or for different things that, that come into play, where the cultural center is very gracious and understanding that the town has given them a great property to perhaps develop, and we all benefit. So this is what I'm saying is, instead of taking a firm no, let's, let's look at it as an opportunity that frankly, we need to be perhaps a little bold. But that's how things get done. We're bold, we get funding, we get, we do it for no cost of the town, and then start returning money to the townspeople? Taxes go down, values of property go up. It's a pretty great deal. And if we didn't have somebody standing in front of us that has already done this with the Pocket Park, with, with different projects around town, I might say, well, you know, it's kind of risky. So I'm, I'm here to say, if this is what Belleforge needs to be successful, let's support them. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you for coming, Jean.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You need to take a formal position on the article before we get to town meeting. The Warrant Committee would, has requested you take a position on that article tonight.
All right. Do you want to make a motion, Eileen?
Motion to vote on the warrant article for.
I think you want to make a motion to dismiss it. To recommend dismissal.
Oh, sorry, okay. Okay, recommend, a motion to recommend dismissal of the warrant article for sale of land, Medfield State Hospital Chapel.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Okay. Next on our list is the Police Chief Garette requests the board to vote to conditionally appoint William Christopher Lee to the position of police officer, transfer effective March 22, pending transfer approval. Barry McGrath, Deputy Chief, thank you for coming, sir.
Sorry to disappoint, Chief Garette isn't available. Members of the board, I'm here tonight, yet another request for a police officer to transfer into our town.
Love that.
His name is Bill Christopher Lee. He's a Sudbury police officer. He began his career, and he's currently in Sudbury.
Sudbury, thank you.
He began his career in Natick in 2016, and he transferred to Sudbury. He now wants to transfer from Sudbury to Medfield. Sudbury is a non-civil service town. We would have to, my, my request tonight is for the board to do a conditional offer of employment so that Bill can get Natick to authorize, I know this is, follow me. This isn't a Belleforge. Natick has to authorize him to transfer, even though he's not working for Natick, because they own his civil service status. So even though he's a Sudbury police officer, he, he maintains his civil service status for five years. So they have to authorize it, which we're hoping they will do tomorrow. So I'm asking tonight if the board would consider to please, consider a conditional offer of employment based on Natick's approval of the civil service transfer.
And if you'll remember, this happened a few years ago. We were looking at a transfer and, from a town that was non-civil service. And we petitioned the town who held the civil service and they would not grant it to us. Which is one of my concerns, and I've discussed this with the officers when we were bargaining out of civil service last year, is that if they leave us as civil service, go to another town, we still hold the civil service. And that's not, it's just not fair. When you want to move or you want to go to a different department, that your original department holds on to that civil service for five years. So there is a chance, you know, I think you have a great relationship with Chief X, and I think Chief X is, is favorable to this. But there is the possibility that Natick could say no. They don't want to release him from his civil service in Natick, even though he doesn't work there.
Gus, questions? A couple. Let me pick a thumb out first. And if Natick did say no, the only consequence of that, if we, if we voted to approve this tonight and then Natick did say no, the only consequence of that would be that our vote was null and void because Natick said no.
My request tonight is conditional. It's just a conditional offer.
So that's the first question. Second question I have, the current, when we, when we got the police department to agree to come out of civil service pending confirmation at the town meeting, the officers who had civil service, all of them, retained their civil service rights and status. In that we have passed that contract, in that we've approved everything, but have not yet gotten the confirmation.
On Monday.
If we bring a civil service officer in from Natick, if they do, if they do approve it, does he then have the same retained rights to civil service that the prior? So he, so if we got out of civil service, then he would.
That is correct.
But we would, so help me understand this. So in, in Sudbury, he's not in civil service, Natick is control, it holds his civil service. He moves back here if Natick approves the extension of his civil service, which means he comes in here as civil service?
My understanding from the chief today, he's coming as a non-civil service officer when his transfer's here.
I have to defer to the chief on that. It is confusing, with the whole, the civil service element is confusing. I'll be honest, I'd never dealt with this type of an issue where we'd have to go through another department where he's not employed and ask permission. That was awkward, I'm not going to lie, the phone call was awkward. But I don't, I cannot answer you 100% on the civil service question.
So are we being, so are we being asked to approve his appointment as a non-civil service officer, which will only happen if Natick extends his civil service status?
Yes, it's just a.
He will keep his civil service status because he's transferring as a civil service.
So I wanted to say that, but I didn't want to go against what you.
Okay, so.
The chief has just said that I completely misunderstood what she told me today.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't want to go against.
She didn't say as nice as that, though.
That's why I just deferred it. So he's going to make, yes, my, that's why we had to ask Natick for permission and he would.
That sort of makes sense.
He will come back civil service.
He'd come in right under the wire.
Okay. So then my next question, probably Christine or Barry. Obviously, we're trying to come out of civil service. Probably in the pristine leaving of civil service, all of our police officers would not be civil service. But in the negotiation, our existing civil service police officers retain their civil service status.
That I can answer 100%.
It sounds like if he comes in, it would be as a civil service transfer. And I think what I just heard is that if he does that, he also will retain his civil service status.
That's correct.
And so that leads me to my question, do we care?
Do we want to postpone this?
It's really, what's the consequence? We, we have a bunch of police officers in the department that are retaining their civil service status. We're now adding another one, and I'm basically saying, what are the consequences to the town of doing that? If there, if it's just kind of like, well, some people have this set of privileges and another set that come in over time won't, and it really doesn't matter a lot, then that's fine.
You're asking, I don't know if you were asking me. I'm all in favor, I think it's a great idea. You're looking right at me.
Sure. Well, you're at the podium.
Obviously, we want to move quick because he has a great deal of interest. And it's a little bit of a finagling to go through Natick. We're really hoping that Natick cooperates and this goes through tomorrow. And this is just a.
Formal individual.
So you're sure you want, the department is sure that you want him?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
There's this administrative question that we'll find out tomorrow whether it works. And the consequences of the town bringing in another civil service officer who will retain his civil service rights and benefits is not that big a deal.
Nope. The chief has confirmed she is fine with that.
Okay. I don't know.
I'm going to have one simple question. So is he kind of married to Natick forever, if he's under the civil service?
No, as soon as.
Oh, five years, I mean, okay.
But once Natick transfers, that Medfield will have his civil service.
We hold the civil service until Monday.
Until, okay.
Until Monday. About 72 hours.
So I would, given our discussion, I would suggest that we vote to approve this conditional law upon Christine and the chief figuring out the timing that works best for the town.
Effective, effective March 22nd.
Yeah, whatever works best for the town.
And the conditional part is conditional on Natick approving.
Yes.
Is that the police chief or the board of, select board?
The, the board, I believe. It's, it's, it's being voted on at the board. Yes.
Okay, want me to motion this? Let's see if I get it right the first time? All right. So motion to vote to conditionally appoint William Chris, Christopher Lee?
Christopher Lee.
Christopher Lee. To the position of police officer, transfer effective March 22nd, pending transfer approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Barry.
Thank you.
Robert Winograd is next to provide an update on the launch of Medfield.
Megan Sullivan is actually going to present to us tonight. Let me just get Megan up. Megan has a presentation, hold on one second.
Welcome, Megan.
On mute.
Still not hearing you.
Nope.
Can be right back. I'm right back.
I want her on my charade team.
I thought she would say, get the wax out of your ears.
Let's see, let's just hold one second.
Chris, shall we go ahead with Mo?
Nope, Megan's trying, hold on. Megan, Brittany has suggested you turn your video off. You might not have enough bandwidth.
She's in a different room. She's in two places at once.
Turn the computer off.
Several times.
You've got reverb going.
Echo from Florida is amazing.
We have a parallel universe going on here. No, you're not. We heard you say that. Getting the echo, but not the words.
She should turn her videos off. I think she didn't have it. Megan, turn your video off.
Both of them.
Yep, and the other one.
Yeah, just gotta mute something. Mute one or the other.
Mute the phone and see if we can get you back on the computer.
I'm guessing the connection would be better on the phone.
She needs to share her presentation, though.
Oh.
Nope, we still can't hear you. Do you want to have a hang up, see if you can, you can work with her and then flat her joint? Yep. Can you unload me on the second video? Mike, is it possible the echo is coming from here? Do you want to turn it there? Oh, okay.
So can she email us her presentation?
Brittany's going to work with her and we'll bring her back. We'll take Mo in the meantime. Perfect. Megan, Brittany's going to call you and see if you guys can practice and then we'll bring you back in after Mo.
So we have Maurice Goulet, Director of Parks, Public Works, Director of Department of Public Works, to request the following, and there are four things. I won't read them all, go ahead, please.
Good evening, how was everybody tonight?
Good.
Good.
One of the first things is this past winter, we've had, had some issues down at the wastewater treatment plant. We had two large clarifier covers. They're monstrosities that with the, with the winds and the cold temperatures, damaged both, both clarifier covers. We went through our insurance carrier. We put a claim through and they were gracious enough to approve the, the funding for those replacements. So that's what this contract is for, the Claire Span Company, to replace those covers.
And can you tell people at home how much it is?
I believe it is $78,000 and change.
Yeah, we had a $5,000 deductible.
$78,962.29.
Thank you.
Is this contract in the pack? Was this in the packet? Is this contract in the packet?
Yes.
Yep.
Why not seeing it?
Page 23 of 105.
Page 20, 105. I only got a 76-page packet.
Uh, the packet got updated. It didn't, yep. Yep.
All right.
Gus, did you have questions, comments?
Well, it's on a contract I haven't seen, so let me try one question, because there's a question I have on all of them, and it's either paragraph eight or paragraph nine. So if this contract has a paragraph eight or paragraph nine, that is like several of the others that we had here, which has to do with payments to the contractor. So the title is payments to the contractor. Is paragraph eight or nine?
It's nine on this one.
Nine.
Nine. Okay, so, yes, I do have questions. If you read that carefully, I think that whole section, if, assuming it's just like all the others, it seems to me that entire section is unacceptable. What it says, there's two, there's two things about it that are confusing to me. Let me, let me make it big enough to where I can read it here.
Contract, which form contract is that?
I've never seen it. So there's
Construction one?
Yeah. Yeah, there's two questions I have, if, if it's reading the same way. First off, the, the terms are within 15 days after receipt from the contractor of a periodic estimate requesting payment of the amount due for the preceding month. The owner shall have 15 days to make payment for the work performed. Why isn't it just 30 days net? It's like, if I'm reading it, I don't understand what it says. It's within 15 days, the town then has 15 days. I've never, in decades, I've never seen wording like that, because it doesn't make any sense to me. Why isn't it just 30 day, you have to pay your bills within 30 days? So that's the first, if this means something other than that, I don't understand what it means. The, the more important thing is, if the owner fails to make payment as herein provided, and I don't totally understand what herein provided is with the 15 plus 15 rather than 30, there shall be added to each such payment daily, daily interest at the rate of three percentage points above the rediscount rate that, that charged by the Federal Reserve Bank of Boston. Now, if there's, if the, if the rediscount rate is zero, that says there's a daily 3% interest charge on the balance due, which says within a 30-day month, probably if I compound the 3% daily, it's double whatever we owed the month before. So, this is in every one of these contracts, and I'm going, this is, this is beyond loan sharking, if I'm reading it correctly. And I assume, Mark, am I reading it wrong, or?
I don't, all I remember is it's a simple construction contract that, template that Amy had that she uses.
Well, I've never, I've never
I don't have what the financial figure is. As a matter of fact, it's just a routine processing on a construction project. There's no reason why that contingency should even kick in.
Did you review the contracts?
Does it, does 3%, daily interest at 3% not mean
I did, but I don't have seen that.
A 3% charge every day? I mean, if it said annual rate of 3% or even monthly rate of 3%, I would get it. But this is literally saying a daily interest charge of 3% of what's owed per day. So that's a pretty big chunk of change that gets thrown in there over a 30-day period, and I don't understand what the 15 and 15 means, if it doesn't mean 30. So I, it's like, it's not the, I don't have a problem with what you want.
It's, it's in the context of a, a construction project, so it's breaking it down, whereas it could have easily, on a simple project like this, we could have used a simpler contract, except the state views this as a construction.
I, I guess I, it, it's either paragraph, paragraph eight or nine in every one of these. I need somebody to tell me how 3% charge per day isn't 3% charge per day. Because right now, that's an absolutely punitive clause in this contract. And I understand, it's ridiculous that you'd have that in a contract coming for what's fundamentally purchased.
It's our contract. It's our, it's our contract. It came from us. So we shouldn't have that. So I think there's an argument probably that it's not 3% a day, that the interest just runs daily, and it, and then the rate is 3% above the Right. The Bank of Boston rate. But it's, you know, like a lot of things, it's not as clear as it could be.
There, if the owner fails to make payment as herein provided, there shall be added to each such payment daily interest at the rate of three percentage points.
So if you don't pay for a week, then you pay seven days' worth of interest, I think is what that's saying, Gus, but
I have a sillier question. So, so the date on this is 2/5/2024, and it's valid for 10 days? So does that matter? I mean, are we?
The contractor agreed to take it, to take, keep the, he, he signed it.
We haven't signed it, but it says the quote's only valid.
Right.
And I, I
The contract does have that price listed in here, and the contractor agreed to sign the contract.
I mean, the way I look at this is, is we're getting insurance money to cover this.
Yes.
Right? And is there any chance that this, the materials won't be available? Should everything ship on time? So it should just be an easy, it arrives, it gets installed, game over?
That's what they're saying.
That's, when I read this, Gus, I, I was looking at some of the terms, and in my, knowing that this was a weather-related thing, my gut was, well, if it arrives and it gets installed and it's a 24, 48-hour process, I'm not overly concerned. But if there's any delay in this, that's when that stuff starts kicking in, right?
Well, the more fundamental issue is
Well, no, if you don't pay the bill.
Once they submit, once they submit the paperwork for payment, is there any reason why it wouldn't be processed in a certain timeframe and the, and the payment checks issued? That's the concern.
How many days do we have to pay based on what this says?
I would say 15, from where you get the bill, is the way that I read that clause.
Okay. So, I mean, I don't think that's reasonable. We, I assume we have an annual pay, or a monthly payment cycle to a month. Well, that's
Well, as long as they don't nickel and dime us. Sure.
I mean, people have to read the contracts and, it's like, I'm not, I'm not prepared to sign a contract that I don't understand what these terms are, because the way I'm reading them, they're extremely punitive terms. If we're, if we were a town that didn't pay our bills on time and they'd had a hard time with us, then I guess I would understand the, the terms. But this is, and it's every one of them. It's absolutely every one of these contracts. I have the exact same issue with, this was one I didn't even see, but it's in there. And every one of them's written that way. And the 15, 15 doesn't make sense to me. Why do you split 30 into halves? Because it must mean something other than 30? Why do you say daily interest at 3% when you don't really mean that? I, I suspect, Pete, perhaps?
Because it was a simplification of a more complex
This is
There's a more complex construction contract for, for bigger projects. They have OPMs on them, they have architects on them, it has this more complex approval process. This is a simplified version of that for in-between projects. And it's a template that Amy submitted. So it's our contract. It's not somebody else imposing that. The money's there and we can
I, I need, I need somebody to
If you're not happy with the terms, then we will take it back.
I either need somebody to explain to me that these terms don't mean what I'm reading them to mean?
Well, we'll, we'll clean it up.
All right. That's, I didn't see the hundred some. I didn't have much time to look, didn't realize it was there. But everyone, I think every one of the contracts that was in the original 76-page packet, as of Sunday, as of Saturday night, has that in it. So it's all of them.
So are we The same form. Are we saying that we're gonna bring these back, then? Yeah, it's our contract. They didn't, it's not like a, they use our contract if anything is favorable to us. So are we That's an oversight somehow, the payment.
I'll take A and D off and resubmit them for the next, the next board meeting.
Okay.
Gus is saying that all four of them have the same clause.
Yeah, they all, they all do.
So Gus, so
The four of yours, Amy's, that she submitted on behalf of facility, sorry.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
So A and D, I will, I will resubmit. I'll work with Mark. We'll, we'll change the contract to something suitable.
Are these time-sensitive? I mean, like, time-sensitive between now and the next meeting?
We'll make it work.
The other, the other thing, if you do that, I'd ask you to check, because I don't know if it's in on all of them, but in, I guess it would be Section 3, Paragraph D, liquidated damages. There's a couple of these, or at least one of these contracts, and maybe it's Amy's, that basically, there's this paragraph on liquidated damages, and it says the liquidated damages are zero. We should just be deleting, if, if there's no liquidated damages.
It's true that damages are supposed to be in, we just added a liquidated damages clause.
At $0 per day.
No, 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 it's supposed, it, I have an email that that was supposed to have been filled in with an, with an amount.
No, no, it is. It says zero, not all of them.
It's not supposed to be zero. It's supposed to be something significant.
Some of them are, there's some in here that are $100 a day, and then there's one or two that are in at $0 a day. So either it's an incorrect real liquidated damage, or it's a paragraph that doesn't need to be in there, because it's a zero liquidated damage. So
So I advise, I advise So rather than cleaning these four up at the meeting table here, we're gonna bring them all four back, right?
We're meeting next Tuesday. We'll see you next Tuesday.
Okay.
Thanks, Mo, for coming.
Thanks, Mo.
I got one more. I got the Southeastern Regional Services Group.
Yeah.
Okay.
Those aren't the same contracts. Those are the same contracts we've been using for the last
No, this is
Simple goods and services.
Yeah.
So it's, um, these are DPW services
Yep.
that we do every year.
Yep.
And I have, I have a packet here. I didn't want to copy every single contract, because they're all the same that we've been using over the last several years. But the awards are in your, in your packet.
So, so B is the awards of the contracts, and C is the vote to authorize you to sign for those things.
If, if you wish.
I'm fine with both of those.
Okay.
I'm sure that is a great relief to you all.
I'm good.
Okay.
You're still coming back to me, Jeff.
Good. Okay, so, so I'm good with both of the
So B and C, we'll do a motion?
B and C, I'm good with, yeah, yeah.
So do you want to do a, do you have questions about either one of those?
I'm good.
Why don't you do a motion then for both of those, please?
All right, so, motion to vote to award the contracts to the Department of Public Works contracts through the Southeastern Regional Service Group, and to authorize a DPW director to sign contracts awarded through the Southeast Regional Service Group for various public work services and supplies.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mo.
Mo.
See you next week.
One out of two, Mo.
I'm so bad.
Discussion items. Is Megan ready?
Oh, yeah, Megan's ready. Hold on.
Yes. There we go.
We can hear you now.
Thank you.
Megan's, Megan?
We're good. Yep.
Super. Okay. I'm gonna try to share my screen, which I am allowed to. And we are going with our presentation. I will start the slideshow. I am here. Okay. After 1,037 days, which is two years, 10 months, two days, and now an extra 12 minutes, I am happy to report that we are here, because Medfield Community Electricity is here. We have approved at the town meeting in 2021, and we've been working on it since then. And so tonight, I'm gonna try and hit the sweet spot between bringing you up to date and an information session, right? Because information sessions are coming with lots of details, but I'd like to give you guys a selection of, of today's information as well. Okay, so Medfield Community Electricity, we have this program, and we seek to offer new electricity supply options that provide more renewable energy and stable prices for all Medfield residents and business owners. And I am pleased to say that today, we signed bids that will make us to do that. We are entering into a 30-month agreement, which will run from June 2024 to December 2027. So we'll be stable for 30 months. What does that mean for you? Here is the, the exciting information. Medfield Standard Products, which includes 10% additional renewable energy that is required by the state, will be 13, like, 13.063 cents per kilowatt hour. And again, this is our default product. Everyone who is, becomes enrolled in the project and the program will be on this project, on this product unless they choose otherwise. And we have three products. This is Medfield Standard, again, the default. Medfield Basic, which has the renewable requirement of the state, will be less than that, like, 1,265 cents per kilowatt hour. And this, it requires someone to opt out and choose Medfield Basic. Or if you would like to have 100% renewable energy, you would choose your product to be Medfield 100, and you would pay premium for that, 0.14108. So it is about a penny more than the default product. And as point of comparison, the ever-shows rate through July of the 2024 billing cycle, which is the only information that we have, is that we're currently paying like 17.216 cents per kilowatt hour. So you can see from the get-go, the rates that we are moving into are going to save our residents a considerable amount. And we're very pleased about that. So what is next? We've been working with the tenants, with communication, communication, communication. So with that, we're gonna have publicity and outreach, and trying to make sure that the whole residents understand what this program is. There is an official opt-out period that will surround our VR campaign, our PR campaign will surround it. And the official opt-out period is 30 days beginning in early April. That means that not going to participate in the program. We have this period of ways in order to, let's call it opt-out. Everybody who does not opt out will be enrolled in the program, starting in June 2024, which is our billing cycle at the beginning of June. So as soon as possible, starting, you know, next week, we have a robust outreach campaign, update our website. That's up now, and it's being updated this week. If you're interested, electricity.netfield.net. We've got press releases going out, social media posts, sandwich boards. We have groceries in the town hall, center of Medfield. We'll be able to get one of those, and we're, we're reaching out to other places to distribute information, town guide, that may be interested memos, full packets, sustainable Medfield, alike. So there's going to be some direct communication with customers who are currently on ever-shows basic service. So that's important. If you are currently on ever-shows basic service, you will be getting information about this program. So if you live in Medfield and you are not on ever-shows basic service, you will not be getting this information, and you will not be automatically enrolled. Only the people who are currently on ever-shows basic service will be enrolled. The beginning of April, probably the 13th and 5th, every one of these customers will receive a postcard at the town seal lot, and basically let you know that watch in the next week for a letter that has a full packet of information. And they, we send that out so that people are anticipating it, because they know there are a lot of, you might get a lot of mail from Medfield electricity suppliers, and we want everybody to know that this is actually coming from the town and it's going to the program. So the postcard received, the official opt-out letter at the town page, which will probably be a week after, or maybe a lot of people will be there. We're going to have two in-person information sessions. One is in the evening, Wednesday, April 4th, 7:00 PM, at the public safety building. That'll also be on Zoom and live stream on Apple TV. We're also doing a daytime session, Wednesday, May 1st, at 10:30 AM with the Center of Medfield. This meeting will just be in person, because the recording from the April 24th session will be available. Any questions? In addition to that outreach, just so you know, good energy for our consultants. In addition to that outreach, just so you know, Good Energy for our consultants who live through this, are available to answer a few questions, either through the website, we get electricity dot medfield dot net, where they're the place to submit questions, and they will be providing their phone number. We provide also sharing the address of the town administrator's contact information. And she will be able to answer any question, is this legitimate program? Yes. Anything that gets more complicated, she'll be supporting it through Good Energy. And I repeat, thank you so much. And then at town meeting night, day six, we'll come to the table. We'll be there for the seventy, answer your questions as well.
Thank you very much, Megan. Gus? Was there something else, Megan?
That was it.
Gus, questions?
Well, just a couple of comments. The first comment, I think, is that if you, if, I'm on the community trust aggregation committee, I'm the strap hacker, and it's Bob Lindergrader, me, and Sullivan have been doing the lion's share of the work. So I just want to publicly acknowledge that this has been more than a year. And the interesting thing I've learned through this is that the Department of Public Utilities treats a program like this as if we were electricity suppliers trying to get licensed, like we had a, I don't know, nuclear power plant. The rigor of the regulatory process is daunting, requires persistence, and takes a lot of work. And I'd just like to acknowledge the work that Bob and Megan have both put in on this. Just a couple of points of clarification in listening to what Megan said. The default, what, what happens is people who are on ever-source basic will default automatically into this program at the default level that Megan called out, which should lower their electricity rates at the present time by about four cents a kilowatt hour. The ever-source will come up with their next six months' rates that will begin in August and go out through, I guess, January. As far as I think we could tell Megan from the discussion we had, it's likely that ever-source rates will go down in that half of the year. Not necessarily likely they'll go below the default rate, but people need to understand that each, the two halves of the year, one half of the year, ever-source might be having higher rates than the other half. So you'll see changes in ever-source rates every six months. This is a long thirty-month contract that gives you stability, and it's giving you stability at least something lower than the current rate. I would be surprised if it's higher than the ever-source rate, so it should be a good deal. And you can always opt out if you want. Anybody who is not on ever-source basic is more than welcome to join this program. It's just that they will not get all the automatic notifications, and they will not be defaulted in it. But anybody who would like to join the program is invited to, and I would actually say encouraged to, because this has the town using a higher level of renewable energy than its electricity supply than the state actually requires. So I just wasn't sure. If that didn't come through clearly enough, that's something to keep in mind. It's, it's a good thing to do. We set it up to be economically a good thing to do, but it's also environmentally a good thing to do. So for those who default, we're defaulting you into a good spot, we believe. For those who don't default, because they're not using ever-source basic, you have to be careful if you've signed a contract with some other supplier, and if you wanna make sure there's no penalties if you get out of that contract, but at least it's something worth considering at the appropriate time if you have an alternative supplier. That's all I had.
Eileen?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So when you talk about ever-source basic, how would somebody know if they're ever-source basic now? Just look at the bill?
And if they didn't do anything to change it, that's where they default to.
Okay. Because I'm, since I don't have solar, I'm curious whether, if you're a solar customer, and would you be using a different rate, different, so that's where your bill would be different, and you might have a contract with somebody versus someone that, okay?
Yeah, I was gonna say, if you have solar panels and you're on net metering, this does not affect that at all. So you will still get whatever you get, so for those who have things under roof like I do, it's a no, that won't change. This won't change now.
And then there's an opt-out, if I heard correctly, is it by the end of April or starting in April?
Probably.
Starting in April.
It starts in April and runs for about thirty months.
Okay. And once you opt out, can you opt in anytime again in the thirty months?
Yes. Generally, yes. You can opt out at any time without any penalty. I, I do believe, you know, there is provision that for opting in after the opt-in period, that they may exercise or not, but in general, yes. And that's when they ever have to exercise it, and they have to apply.
And then? Is it possible for the public information sessions to reach, to, to learn from other towns? Like, I have friends that live in Norton, and I was asking them about this over the weekend, and they had no idea. And then they're like, oh, you know what? I just found in my bill that this is the increase, blah, blah, blah. So I would love to have some data points for our citizens to learn about some towns that may have been in this the last two or three years. And they, then those towns re-opted, to see what the jump was, to see how many people stayed in. Just any sort of data points to help our Medfield residents that this may be completely new to them, if it's possible?
I know that they have anecdotal information for sure, at the moment, about their, I'm talking about that you need Good Energy, and the other thing that they have.
Oh, I show.
Eileen, I wanted to just tell you, on your bill, it has two, you get two sets of charges. You get charges for supply and charges for delivery.
Okay.
And when you look at your bill, you look at the supply, it will tell you who your supplier is. And if it says ever-source basic, then it's a chance to use it, and you would be opting, or you would be automatically enrolled in this program. But if it says something else, says constellations, says something else, then you would have to, you will not be automatically included.
And so for what it's worth, I'm looking at my friend's text right now. They're with National Grid, and they are still enrolled in the community aggregation. It was renewed or renegotiated in December of twenty-three, good through November twenty-five. Kilowatt rate is fifteen seventy-eight, looking back at my twenty-twenty-two bill, it was ten forty-seven. So those are some of the data points. I would love to be able to at least educate our residents on towns that have done it. What did they experience? Where are they today? Just to help people understand the fluctuation, because my question to my friend was, my concern would be, you get in, you lock in for thirty months, and then when you go to renew, do the rates jump dramatically? Is it comparable to what the market rate is? I don't know. So these are the things I'd just like to help people understand better. Okay.
Everybody feel comfortable that they can opt out at any time, for sure. You can go to ever-source basic anytime you would like, and I'm sure we can get you some information. I remember a chart that shows, and sometimes you're above ever-source, sometimes you're below ever-source, but over the course of, you know, thirty months, it typically works that you're.
Is there a fee for getting in and getting out? Do you know?
Technically, if someone, there's no fee to get out, but if somebody wants to jump in in the middle of a contract, technically, there is the provision to be charged a fee to do that. I think, Megan, what Good Energy told us is although that provision, and basically, you can see how somebody could game the system.
Sure.
Oh, when, when ever-source is high, I wanna be in.
Right.
When ever-source is low, or it's ever-source, and then when it, and so they jump in and out. I don't think enough people do that to have anyone impose that fee. So it's there. It could be imposed as a practical matter. Not that many people are sitting there watching their bill every month to say, hey, I could save three cents per kilowatt hour for the next three months by doing this. So I think it's not, it doesn't happen enough to where the suppliers think it's worth imposing the fee on people who do it. But if you're exposed to that, if, if you try to game the system that way, you're on your own.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So this is a win for the residents of Medfield, and this is a win for our, our planet, because we'll get greener energy. So, and, and given the numbers that we were given tonight, the savings, based on the current ever-source charge, is about a quarter of, of your electricity. So we're just getting information tonight? We're not doing anything? So thank you, Megan. Yes, Mr. Rosaro?
Maybe I missed it, Megan. I apologize if I did, but we're all coming in at the Medfield standard rate, is that correct? Just curious as to why you even bother showing the basic?
Because it's an option. If people just want the cheap.
So is that an opt, is that an opt-down as well as an opt-up? Okay.
You can opt up, you can opt down, or opt out.
And Megan, if I recall, that's actually required of the program, is that there be an equivalent to that, that lower level.
Yeah, I'm just cur- curious as to, yeah, great, thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Appreciate your work on this. Our next item is discuss and potential vote on select board policy for handling routine communications not involving board deliberations to comply with open meeting law requirements, e.g., administrative reviews of meeting minutes, employee contracts.
I think I triggered that.
Okay, I don't have a problem with that.
If you want me to start, I can. In the open meeting law, there is an exception for, like, in our case, anytime two of us are talking, we're a quorum. So the open meeting law, you're in violation. If we're, if we're talking business, it's a violation of the open meeting law for us to talk business outside of formerly published meetings. The open meeting law calls out one specific exception, and that's when we're trying to coordinate agendas for our meetings. So basically, a non-deliberative activity where we're just simply trying to call, figure out the meeting agenda for next week. We can communicate with one another about what we think should be on the agenda. As a practical matter, for the past, better part of the past year, when we have meeting minutes, that we are simply working to make sure that the meeting minutes accurately reflect the results of a meeting that we had where we were delivering, we have been reviewing those on Google Docs, which means each one of, whoever, whoever looks at it first, they make revisions, it shows up as so-and-so made this correction. And I can tell you that in my experience, probably ninety to ninety-five percent of the corrections I make are editorial, wordsmithing comments, you spelled that wrong. There is no Ms. Murphy, and there's no Mr. Murphy on the select board.
That's a popular one.
And I, and I suspect Eileen and I are both worried, at some point, whoever follows Richard DeStorger and writes the next history of the, of the town of Medfield, there'll be a report that there's a married couple that actually served for a couple of years on the select board. Because, so we've, we've been working to correct the spelling on that thread, trying to keep the record clear. Most recently, in the process of processing the contracts of the, in this particular case, the town administrator, and for the police chief, we have had, we have closed meetings for those, because those are contract meetings. At the point that we have reached agreements, and we have a lawyer who's supporting us, when we get to the point where in the closed meeting, we have an agreement over the contract, and we wind up with a draft, or it will be done, in some cases, have a lawyer help us in drafting the contract. So the thing that triggered this was, our lawyer this time around, sent the three of us an email that said, did you guys finalize this section, which we had finalized? This was not a deliberation. There was nothing in dispute. It was just an administrative processing of a document, trying to get it finalized so we could get to an agreement. I sent a message, I waited a day, just to see if anybody else was gonna send a response, and maybe they did, I don't know. But I sent a response to the lawyer, basically copying Eileen and Pete, saying, yep, we got there, it's all set. At which time, the lawyer said, well, I hate to do this, but you know, the open meeting law really has restrictions. So that was the first point. Then I think Eileen, a week later, you got, we got a similar administrative question to the three of us. Eileen did the same thing, and Pete basically said, can you not copy me? I'm worried about the open meeting law. And that's, I'm not saying that as criticism of Pete, I'm saying we three need to be clear. If every time we do anything like that, we need to be in a published meeting, we're gonna have a lot of public meetings. And the purpose, there is no deliberation in that process.
Right.
So I'm actually asking for the three of us to kinda get our act together on how we're gonna handle that. And I will furthermore suggest that we commit, before we even heard what it is, that we commit to the most restrictive standard any one of us wants to see. So I'm not arguing for the Wild West here. I'm willing to live with anything, but what I'm not willing to do is have people ask me a question, especially where in, in a thing like a contract, ask me a question along with the two of them, and we're all supposed to send the answer to the guy who's supposed to be supporting us, and we don't know whether we're in sync on our answer or not, because we can't copy each other. And it's an administrative process, so I wanna put an end to that.
That was my faux pas, because there was something that was, we all agreed to be removed. And my worst fear was, if I didn't call it out to make sure we're on the same page, it was going to, was like playing post office, right? And yet, we weren't making any, I didn't change anything, other than say, this clause, we all agreed needs to be removed, and it's still in it.
Right. We're just trying to get to an accurate documentation of an agreement that we did reach in a, in a closed meeting, or in that case, closed meeting, but even a public meeting. We're just trying to memorialize it correctly.
Well, what's good is our attorney did come back and say, you didn't break open meeting law, for the, you know, just to, just to clear the air on that. But it is kind of funny, even when we do meeting minutes, it's, it's the silliest thing, because we're not changing anything that literally happened here, other than to get it as accurate as possible.
Right. So that's the conversation I wanted the three of us to have, so that we're in sync, because.
Okay, so I, I, I'm, I'm the one that I guess sparked it by asking you not to copy me, and I disagree with the attorney. I think that your email was a violation of the open meeting law, because you were, you were going to a particular point in a particular contract and saying, this is what it should be. To me, that's deliberation in my mind, so I asked you not to copy me on that. And I, I actually sent an email back to the attorney after he said he didn't think that deliberation had happened, that I told him that I thought I had a difference of opinion with him about what involved deliberation. And to me, that was deliberation, so.
But it wasn't.
He was reporting an agreement we had reached at a meeting.
That's deliberation, in my mind.
Well, okay, but it's in your mind, but that, but what I will say, what I will say candidly is, I, now that the attorney has said it wasn't, I am taking offense that I'm being called out for something that I didn't do. It was like, B should not be there. It's not, I don't, I don't think it should be there, we agreed it wouldn't be there, right? That's where, I don't think it was a deliberation, I didn't make it I.
You're saying this shouldn't be there, and to me, that's deliberation, in my mind.
So in other words, it should have been there.
Deliberation is used in the open meeting law. It's a term of art, it's defined, it's communication. It's not, doesn't have to be substantive, unfortunately. It's a very unworkable situation. What?
Why is the meeting agenda an exception of the open meeting law?
Because they wrote that in as an exception to the statute and the regulations. And that's, and.
I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't say in the open meeting law, the one exception to this is the meeting.
There's a whole list of exceptions. There's, the following are not to be considered deliberations, and then it lists a whole bunch of them. I don't have, I didn't bring it with me.
Yeah, I'll have to read it too, because that's the one that pops up, but my point is, why is that not a deliberation?
Because they say, the legislature determined it wasn't.
So the open meeting law says, this is the exhaustive list of all the exceptions.
Right, yeah.
It does claim it as an exhaustive list.
Yep. And in, insofar as, the statute says what the statute says, but then they, then the statute authorized the Attorney General's Division of Open Government to implement it by regulation and interpretation, and they've taken a very hard position.
So when, when I see Pete in, in Brothers Market and say, hi Pete, I'm communicating with him, is that a violation of the open?
No, because there's, there's an exception for social speech.
All right, I gotta read the open meeting law. I have to review the exhaustive list. But the reason I'm bringing it up is, I mean, Pete, your interpretation of that situation mine is right in line with Eileen. She was not reporting what she thought, she was reporting what we agreed to. And if that's, but I already said, I think we need to live by the tightest standard any one of us wants to live by. The consequence, so let's first off, deal with contracts. One possibility is that every single communication we have is in a published, either open or closed meeting, depending on the circumstance. That's the only way that we communicate at all about what the status of a contract is. However long it takes us to do that, however many minute meetings it takes to get that done, that's what we need to do to abide by the open meeting law. That's one option. Another option is, we basically just say, look, when it comes to the finalization of contracts, I'll say, the chair of the select board has the responsibility for processing, to acting within, between the lawyer select board has the responsibility for processing it, to acting within, between the lawyer and the select board administratively processing the document. And when it's ready, the finalized document can be presented to the three members of the board for final review and approval. And that'll rotate, so it's not a burdensome thing. If we want to do that for that, that's fine. And let me put up the awkward one. So what about meeting minute reviews? Is that on the list?
Yeah. It's not an exception. And I go through this myself in the Community Preservation Committee in Medway. It's, it's a big pain in the neck, but that's the way it is.
So how do you...
What you, what you can do is, what you've been doing is, I'm okay with, as far as you don't communicate among yourselves, you send your changes into Brittany or whatever, and she sorts it out.
All right.
Well, technically, we can see, though. I can...
We can keep that as the policy, because...
The problem is, the example you started out with, Gus, which, you know, it's a practical one, that they won't let you do, is all get on and play on a Google Doc, because that's, that's going to be viewed as a deliberation.
But that's what we do. Like, if I get in first...
That's going to be viewed as a deliberation, because you're seeing what each other's doing.
But we're just making edits to one another's names, 90% of the time.
It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. First of all, you've got people in that office that, that are very committed to enforcement of the open meeting law, and also have very little practical experience with how local government works. And it's almost impossible.
So we need to change our procedures then on that, and, and maybe we'll all make our, our changes separately, and then somehow we'll have to circulate those. Headache.
That's weird. I don't know if we'll ever get an accurate meeting minute again.
Yeah.
Because we have to stop, we'd have to reread everyone's, every time we do it.
Yeah. If we have to do that, we should have an option, just as a video recording constitutes, meeting minutes.
Yeah.
They've tried that. And there's been, there's been pushback to that, because nobody wants to have to look through a whole video, when you can just jump around and find something in minutes.
But you could do it by minutes, like this, like tonight.
All I know is, that was proposed to the legislature. Minutes are archaic, we've got this video, we've got streaming, we've got everything, we don't need minutes anymore, and there was all kinds of pushback.
But minutes can be fairly cursory, can't they?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're useless. That makes them useless. Yes.
Yes. Chris?
Chris Potts, Seven Curve Street. So first of all, there are probably people listening to this conversation and saying, oh, gosh, why is this being dragged out? But I will tell you that I think this is really wonderful, that you're having this conversation, because it shows that you care about open meeting law. And that in itself is really good evidence for the Attorney General's office, if anybody were ever to push back. And this doesn't happen a lot of meetings, I will tell you that. My question is, I thought, Mark, if you can just correct this, if you have a Google Drive, and the Google Drive itself is public, can they, can't you edit, can't there be editing if the drive, it's, if it's public?
No.
No? You can't?
No.
I thought if something was public, you can...
I know, because when I studied the open meeting law, that was my solution.
Okay.
To have that, and that doesn't work.
I mean, hypothetically, if they met in a store, it's a public place.
Right.
And that...
For some reason, I thought...
Google Drive, if it's a public document, everybody can see it, and so it...
Right, that's what I thought. I thought you could get, if for minutes, you could get away with it.
That's my understanding, it doesn't work. Because that was my solution early on.
Right.
That that would be a way to...
You're welcome to call the Director of Open Government and put it to him or her directly and, and get a response. We went, we went through this once before with social media responses. And they were extremely rigid in, in that, so.
The reality too is, if someone were to file a complaint, there's nothing that really happens. There's just really nothing that happens. All you do, you say you're sorry, they come back and they say, okay, you know, just don't let it happen again.
That's the first time. It's the, don't let it happen again part.
Yeah, but that...
Bills on itself.
I agree. I agree with you, Chris. To your point is, it's only a violation if somebody has an objection to it. But I guess this conversation is, that, that requires a certain degree of, I don't know if it's bad faith, but it's an absence of 100% good faith. So if there's a way we can get to a place that we say, okay, here's how we're going to do it, what I'm not willing to accept, especially when it comes to contracts, is that the lawyer who is supporting our negotiation is the only one who actually, we are, we are a single body that's negotiating a contract. And what I'm not willing to live with is, a lawyer that supports us is the only one who actually knows what this body is thinking. So that's the part that I object to, is that we need to get the lawyers out of the process, not, not this lawyer, but the other lawyers out of the process, so that basically, we have however many meetings we have to have to hash out administratively what the words need to be. And we can use a lawyer at the front end to give us a draft, and we can use a lawyer at the back end to do a final legal review. And outside of that, there's no lawyers helping us. We're only talking to ourselves, and if we have to do it in, in public meetings or closed, announced meetings, it's going to be a pain in the butt, when we're only administratively processing documents, but so be it.
And the reality of, of our work is that all of our contracts are really done at this table, except for a handful of employment contracts. Two, three?
Thank you just for, I thank you for caring about this, that's all.
Okay, so we, it's the Division of Open Government? That's in the AG's office.
So we change...
Physically out of Worcester, but I believe you, they may run everything through Boss now, and they all may be work, still working remotely as well, because of COVID.
We can get you a contact.
Yeah, if you want me to, I will.
Yeah.
Given that I'm the one who lit the fuse on this one.
Sure, please.
I'll be happy to give them a call.
So Gus, my, my solution to the situation that we were facing with Christine's contract was, when, when John sent it to us, we should each have sent our contract, our, our comments back to him individually.
I am not willing to do that, Pete.
I understand.
So that's, my standard needs to be tighter than that.
Yeah.
See, I don't understand why he sent it to all three of us that way. If we are only allowed to comment one, one-on-one, why send it to all three? That's what threw me. I was like, they didn't make any...
Yeah, he was saving time.
Pete, don't have to be totally obstinate about this. If, if you think that, you understand what I'm not willing to do, if you think we should adopt a policy that when it comes to contracts like this, the chair of the select board is the single conduit of communication between a lawyer who supports us and us, I'm happy with that. Because then, when I get a question from someone that copies all of us, and I wonder, who's supposed to provide the answer, it doesn't look like anybody's answered, and a day has gone by, I don't, if I'm not the chair, I don't worry about it.
Right.
So I'm okay with that. We just have the chair take the lead on the processing of contracts. That works.
Yeah, that's, that's fine with me. I mean, I, I would, I would suggest also that if you have an, if any of us have an issue, we should get back to the attorney, because the chair may not recognize that issue that, that you or I have.
I, so I...
But then you're not, then that person's not the lead to the attorney, because then you're coming in sideways. And I think the, the point is, you have one communication, the attorney to the chair, and then the three people get together, the three of us would be getting together in theory, talking it through, and then you as a chair would be talking to someone like John. And John's not going out to the two of us, because he's getting it straight from you. And we know it's accurate, because when the final contract comes ready for execution, it meets what our standard...
Yeah, so, I mean, it circles back eventually, so, but I, I have no problem with it, with people on the board emailing the attorney.
If it's during the negotiation of the contract, I, I don't have a problem either, Pete. If, if I were to read something, and I say, I don't understand what this paragraph means, I, I agree with you, I don't, I don't think we're trying to restrict us, each of us, from reaching out to the lawyer who's helping us. So that piece, however, I do think it's a problem when we individually negotiate with the lawyer on what we think the contract needs to be, not in front of our two fellow members of the board. That has to be done with all three, because we are a single body negotiating a contract. It's not the lawyer that's negotiating a contract, and we're not negotiating outside of an open meeting with ourselves through a lawyer. So, and if we did it where the lawyer is potentially the person who helps us with the draft to start with, and is the person who reviews the, what we consider to be the final contract for legal sufficiency and anything else, then it's only the lawyer at the front end and the back end, and everything in the middle is just us, so.
Yeah, well, I think you're positing problems that just aren't going to really exist, but...
They already, they already do.
It did happen, that's...
That's why I'm bringing this up.
Because we can't have this conversation behind closed doors.
Right. So I, it's just, I mean, when I sit there and it's not me, there's a chair, and we get this message to three of us asking a question, and for 24 hours, there's silence, or maybe not, I don't see the advantage of three individual members communicating to a lawyer, giving them, giving the lawyer either consistent answers or inconsistent answers, and the lawyer then decides whether or not to tell us about our consistency and inconsistency.
So can I give a, for example, this is, this will, I think, so I bounced back saying that a particular clause, we agreed, was to be removed, and I still saw in the contract, so that needed to be removed. Now, if, if I said that, and it went back, and then it didn't get removed again, they would say to me, okay, did someone else go back and say, leave it in? Right? But yet, we agreed, that it was, and it did get removed, because we had agreed it was going to be removed. So I think that's where the confusion comes into play. It was weird when he sent that email. I'm like, how do we know that we're all still, like, we're all in agreement with this? And we don't get a contract that, we just want to move along here, that we've spent time on. Yeah, it's...
Well, okay, I think we got to, I think, we got to an agreement as far as contracts go, that the conduit is the chair directly to the lawyer. We probably need to be more thoughtful about bringing the lawyer in, potentially at the front end, but definitely at the back end.
But not in the middle.
Probably not in the middle.
Okay.
And I'm okay with that. And then everything that we do gets processed in meetings.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
Next item is 2024 Town Meeting and FY25 Budget Items. Chris?
So several weeks ago, I presented the fiscal year 25 budget to you. We were very close to a balanced budget, and I'm pleased to report we have a balanced budget. This is the first time we've had a balanced budget in March in I don't know how long, 25 years. So we're incredibly proud of it. I can't thank the Warren Committee, the School Committee Superintendent for embracing this new process of the revenue consensus hearing at the beginning. It really made this process much smoother for everybody involved. As you know, based on the updated guidance from the Warren Committee, the schools had a 4.7% increase in their budget, the town had a 4.8% increase in their budget, and overall, it's a 2.91% over last year's budget. The Warren Committee is prepared to move forward with that, and they're moving on to warrant articles as of tonight. But if you're okay with all of this, I will let them know you're happy, and we can continue to proceed. And it does meet the financial policy as, as well. That's something we monitor as we are developing the budget all along.
I think we're okay with it, and we're pleased with it. So thank you.
Great. If you can just vote that you're approving that, because there are several items in there, including the 3% cost of living, that I just want on the record that you approve to move forward.
Okay.
Motion to approve the FY25 budget?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Chris, did you want to go through the, the warrant articles tonight?
Your meeting next Tuesday, where, I think next Tuesday, which is, you know, our extra meeting in March, should really be focused on the town meeting and on the warrant articles. You did take a position at least on one tonight. Let's hold the rest of those and, and make that the focus of our meeting next week.
Okay. Action items, board and committee appointments, except for the resignation of Ann Thompson from the Board of Trustees of the Affordable Housing Trust as a full member, and appoint her as an associate member. Ann has moved out of town, so this accommodates that. Do we have a motion?
So Ann, I just want to acknowledge that Ann sent us, on her resignation letter, put a note to all of us that although she is physically not in Medfield, her heart will always be in Medfield, so.
And I'm actually on the Affordable Housing Trust, so I support this 1,000%. If we can get her in via Zoom, if there's a chance one of her kids can bring her, she's been passionate, and we all know her. She's been such a supporter of this town that this is a no-brainer. So I, if you want me to read the motion? So accept the resignation of Ann Thompson from the Board of Trustees of the Affordable Housing Trust as a full member, and appoint her as an associate member.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Next, vote to sign the affiliation agreement between Worcester State University and the town of Medfield for clinical educational experiences for nursing, speech-language pathology, and occupational therapy students.
So this is an agreement that allows us to take interns on in the Public Health Department and work directly with Brenda, who is our public health nurse. It's awesome.
So I do have some questions, just to be, just, I think it's, it's a good thing to do, because it gives students a chance to get clinical experience. There were a couple of clauses in the contract that I was, it was referring to facilities that the town would have, and things like that. And I just was unclear with Brenda, two, for two things. Number one, there's three different professions that we're proposing to be prepared for, speech, OT, and...
Nursing.
What was it?
Nursing.
Nursing, yeah. And I, and I, the only question I had is, do we really have the ability, and if Brenda were here, she could answer the question. These are not things that would cause me not to vote for this, but do we actually have the opportunities for people from all three of those specialty areas to get practical experience here in town? Maybe all they're getting is public health experience in a more general sense, but usually clinicals are, you're getting direct experience in the, in the area that you're getting your degree in.
So I did provide comments on that contract weeks ago, so I'm not, they're not fresh. But my focus was, it was a form from Worcester State that seemed to be for another medical facility, more appropriately, like a urgent care facility, something like that, whereas really, all we had was some offices and things, and maybe the language should be modified to reflect that. So I did make that point.
Unfortunately, Brenda couldn't be here tonight, so I apologize, she can't speak to this. It's my understanding we are only accepting nursing students. But I will have, I can have that conversation with her, but I believe it was just nursing that she had been focusing on. And she has done this in the past. But I can get a confirmation from her.
Would you like to hold this then, Gus, for...
Well, I'll defer. If two of you wanted to just vote on it now, it's a good, it's a good thing to do. It's just this, again, I'm the attack dog on contract terms, I guess, and I'm looking at some stuff and saying, I don't, I don't know. Certainly, there are sections in there that refer to the hospital. So, and I talked to my wife, who's, who works at Spalding Rehab, and she at one time was actually, ran the student program in, in Charlestown for her department. And she said, yeah, they all, all the schools come in with their boilerplate, and this is their boiler. We don't have our own boilerplate, I bet, because I bet you we've never done this before. So in a sense, it's boilerplate, it calls out things that are inaccurate like that. I think they're inconsequential, probably. And I think this is a good thing. So if the two of you want to just deal with this tonight, I'm willing to go along with it, even though I'm raising reservations about what it says in, in practical terms. It makes more sense to me if all we're taking is nursing students, and I'm guessing we're probably only taking one student at a time, no matter what they are. So I'm, I'm okay with going along with it, but it's kind of a, you know, it's, it's the school's boilerplate that we're signing up for.
Yes, Mr. Hallissey.
Microphone.
You have to use a microphone, so that people at home can hear you, please?
11 Ledge Tree Road. My experience in wordsmithing on contracts to use the term "such as," maybe you can just insert that word, you know, that phrase, so that they can pick whatever they want, or even other things beyond what has been listed. It's things "such as," and it's only as an example.
It presumes, falsely presumes, certain facilities and amenities that just don't apply in the municipal. So that's, that's the problem.
That's the point I have, is like, they're calling out things that I don't think
But that being said, I don't, I don't recall any red flags, like, I'm looking for indemnity or harmless, stuff like that. I don't recall seeing any, so.
So I'm willing to go with it, even though it's sort of a...
In the spirit of it, I'm, I'm willing to approve this, because I think it's...
Yeah, it clearly is not appropriately worded for what we're doing, but it's, I don't think there's a lot of risk, so.
Yeah, okay.
So shall I motion that we vote to sign the affiliation agreement between Worcester State University?
Move to sign.
Oh, move to sign, excuse me. Move to sign, the affiliation agreement between Worcester State University and the town of Medfield for clinical educational experiences for nursing, speech-language pathology, and occupational therapy students.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, aye. I was interested, because I didn't know there was a Worcester State University. Next item is vote to sign the contract with RISE Engineering for rooftop heat pumps and units at the library for $31,918.
So those are the contracts we're going to hold. So let's hold those until next week. So you're going to hold 10, you're going to hold 11? So you're going to hold 10, you're going to hold 11, and 12.
We're making fast progress, that's good. 13, request a waiver of the building permit fees for the rooftop heat pumps units at the library, replacement sprinkler heads at the Medfield Public Library, and ceiling repairs at the Parks and Recreation Center.
Sounds reasonable.
Yeah, it's silly for us to pay ourselves for these projects.
Let's pay ourselves a lot.
No, I got a kick out of some of these contracts.
We can up our budget.
Some of these contracts were not worded to waive it. They basically said, to the extent that you charge me fees, the town will reimburse us for the fees, which is sort of a neat way to do it, but...
All right, yeah. So motion for a waiver for the building permit fees for the rooftop heat pump units at the library, replacement sprinkler heads at the Medfield Public Library, and ceiling repairs at the Park and Rec Center.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, aye. Next item is request a waiver of the building permit fees for the emergency repair of the relay that controlled the air vac system to remove diesel exhaust from the apparatus bay at the Public Safety Building.
So this is for a repair that has already taken place. This was an emergency repair. After the emergency, you do need to file the building permit to address the emergency, which requires a building permit fee, so we are looking for a waiver of that as well.
Okay. So...
Discuss?
No questions.
Eileen?
All right. Motion to, motion for a waiver of the building permit fee for the emergency repair of a relay that controls the air vac system to remove diesel exhaust from the apparatus bay at the Public Safety Building.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Number 15, request from Memo to hold 44th Annual Discover Medfield Day on Saturday, September 28, 2024, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and to do the following. A, request the use of the town-owned land at Meeting House Pond and portions of North and Frerey Streets and Uppam Road. B, request to approve the common victualers license and application and waive the $50 fee. C, request to hang the banner announcing Discover Medfield Day across Main Street and at Baxter Park from around August 18 through Discover Medfield Day.
The only question I have on banner, first off, I guess I have two questions. Number one, this is, I think, Russ, when you communicate, this is just the standard request, it's a duplicate of what we normally approve.
Right. This is something every year that it's been boilerplate, cookie cutter, that I've done.
Right. And then the only other question, only in light of a couple of conversations we've had, I assume the fire chief is good with the banner over the street.
I think just coordinate with him on that.
So for several years now, Memo has done it on their own with another individual in town who has a bucket truck. Our town doesn't have a bucket truck anymore, so he would have to go out to, I think Medway was one of them, that he used to borrow a bucket truck. So we ended up, like I said, a few years ago, starting with this other individual in town who has a bucket truck, and we do it on an early Sunday morning. So we haven't, you know, involved the town resource on that.
The only reason I ask the question, Russ, is that in the last year or so, I've heard a little more blowback from the fire chief, I thought, having concerns about a banner across the street, so I'm just trying not to...
I would just, I would coordinate with him first.
He has a concern with hanging a banner there for anybody, whether it's the town or us?
Clearance issue, yeah, I assume it's a clearance issue. I mean, I'm happy to approve this, subject to approval of the fire chief for the banner.
I'll have a conversation with him and find out if there's an issue.
Yeah. And have you had a chance to fill out the event paperwork yet?
Police Department?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was submitted at the same time. I believe I, yeah, I did the letter first, and then she...
Brittany sent it to you?
Brittany sent me the request, and I'm pretty sure that I immediately did it and sent it into her, so you'll have to ask her if she received it. But yes, I did, I know I filled it out.
So just make your vote subject to approval of the...
I got it, I just wrote that down. Shall we?
Any questions?
Nope, I'm good.
I'm good, too. Go ahead.
All right. Motion to approve from Memo to hold the 44th Annual Discover Medfield Day on Saturday, September 28, 2024, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and to do the following. Request to use the town-owned land at Meeting House Pond.
Knock off the word "request."
Oh, sorry, bad habit. To use the town-owned land at Meeting House Pond and portions of North and Frerey Street and Uppam Road, to approve the common vic license and application and waive the $50 fee, and to hang the banner, subject to fire chief approval, announcing Discover Medfield Day across Main Street at Baxter Park from around August 18 through Discover Medfield Day, which...
Second.
And was that subject to the police?
Fire.
Police and fire, wasn't it?
We have an event form. We just need pending the approval of the event form.
Is that okay with your motion?
Yep.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Next, 16, request from Memo to hold their annual summer concert series on Thursdays, June 6 to August 15 at the gazebo. A, request the use of town-owned land around the gazebo. B, request to hand the banner, to hang, it should be hang, the banner announcing the summer concert series across Main Street at Baxter Park from around June 2 through the last concert.
Same concern, subject to approval?
And we need the event form, yep.
So is that to both the fire chief and the police chief, or just the fire chief?
The event form gets reviewed by everyone.
But when I talk about subject to approval...
Of the police and fire chiefs.
For the banner, you want to have a discussion with the fire chief. The event form is just the police department event form, but we all review it.
Okay. All righty, so motion for Memo to hold their, to approve them, to hold the annual summer concert series on Thursday, June 6 through August 15 at the gazebo. Request to use the town-owned...
Use...
Of course I have it. Motion to use the town-owned land around the gazebo to hang the banner, subject to fire chief approval, announcing the summer concert series across Main Street at Baxter Park from around June 2 through the last concert, subject to the event form approval.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, aye. Next...
And if I could, please?
Yes.
You'll happen to notice that I try to have the date, we try to take down the summer concert banner the same time we put up the Medfield Day banner, so depending on when I can get that individual, it's kind of around those dates, but it's the end of the concerts and, you know, before Medfield Day. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Laurel.
Thanks for doing it. Number 17, vote to approve and sign the 2024 to 2027 Employment Agreement with Town Administrator Christine Turewiler. And this was the contract that the select board recently worked out with Christine, and the big change was that there was a bonus that was moved from being a bonus added on to being embedded into the consideration.
Motion to approve?
Any questions?
I don't have any.
All right. I'm thrilled to be able to read this motion, considering you have just had your 25th anniversary serving at town of Medfield, which I can say personally, I very much appreciate, so thank you. Motion to approve and sign the 2024-2027 Employment Agreement with Town Administrator Christine Turewiler.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Citizen comment, Chris, anybody?
I have nobody registered for this evening.
Consent agenda, four items. Request to post a sign advertising basketball training camps from March 20 until April 3 at the intersection of Main and North Streets. Secondly, request to post an informational signboard regarding the launch of Medfield Community Electricity from March 26 to April 9 at North, and then from April 10 to April 24 at the transfer station. Third, request for Medfield Youth Little League to hold the annual opening day festivities and parade on Sunday, April 28. And lastly, request to approve the annual Maverick 5K on May 5, which will begin and end at the Montrose School. Is there a motion to do that?
I just have one quick question. Who's hosting the basketball training camps? Is that town-funded? Is that a third, somebody from out of town?
I'd have to look, I don't know off the top of my head. I'd have to look and see.
Little League have an event activities forum, too, or no?
Yes, they all have them. Okay. Move to approve the consent agenda? Whoops, sorry.
Yes, Laurel.
Laurel Scotty, 10 Green Street. We would just like to request the neighborhood on Green Street, that with the Montrose School, that there be some sort of limitation on their use of the massive boombox that they have. We support their, the reason for the function, but when we go down there to complain about the boombox, which you could hear on Green Street, when I went down last year, a gentleman was leaving, and he just shook his head, and I went down, I said, could you lower it? And they said, oh, you people complain every year. And I said, well, okay, when I complain every year, next year I'm going to the Board of Select, when you're, the Select Board, when you're requesting this permit. So all we're requesting is that the boombox not be as loud as it starts at 8:15 in the morning.
Okay. Is that, Christine, is, on the event forum, do they describe what they'll be doing so that we could coach them on being respectful to the neighbors? Because if they're not going to acknowledge that, then the next year may be no boombox, so...
No, I'll have a conversation with them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laurel.
All right. So motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Meeting minutes, January, I don't think I've looked at those, so let's hold those. Town Administrator updates?
Just a few for you this evening. I had the privilege of attending the St. Patrick's Day Dinner at the Council on Aging, and I just have to say thank you to all the employees at the Council on Aging for, it is such a well-oiled machine in their serving up there, it's unbelievable. But it was a packed house, and it was just such a great event, the music, everything, it was just really, really nice event. I know it's one of our smaller events we have in Medfield, but it is one of my favorite ones, and that's not just because I love Irish soda bread, but anyway. It was a fantastic dinner. Sarah, her entire team up there is just absolutely fantastic, so it was a great event. Congratulations to Katie Walper, our Parks and Recreation Director, who is receiving an award from the State Organization of Parks and Recreation, I believe, this evening, so congratulations to her. We have our town election on Monday. Voting is 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and that is our local election for our local officials, as well as a civil service question, which will appear that we talked about earlier this evening. And then just a reminder, we have planning board hearings on the MBTA Communities on March 28 and April 1. We encourage everybody to attend. If they aren't able to attend, please send an email to Maria or to my office with any questions, and we're happy to get back and discuss that further with anyone. That's it for this evening.
Select Board reports. Mr. Murby?
I don't have a lot of town stuff to report, other than last night's MBTA Communities meeting that I thought was good, had a lively discussion. I do believe the town is close to getting to a solution that will put us into compliance with the state's requirements of the MBTA Communities law in a way that minimizes the impact on our zoning. There are some changes that'll be processed, or they'll be showing up, but again, I've complimented him a couple of times, but it was the planning board's efforts to figure out how to do this in a way that would minimize the impact. And I went from being an angry opponent to that draconian authoritarian law to one that I think we found a way to deal with it in a, in a good way that I believe the town should support, so. And then on top of that, last week I was gone skiing, so I'm in a really good mood this week.
I don't know if Mo would agree with that.
Eileen?
All right, so we're starting off with, Sunday night was really fun, because I live close to high school. We got to hear the fire trucks and the police sirens, and kudos to our Medfield High School girls' basketball team, they won the state championship, Division II, quite impressive. But it was really fun, it was a nice turnout, you could see people along South Street, so it was really fun. And then, you know, in general, I want to say, all of the sports teams, you know, if you look at what the, the boys' basketball team made it to playoffs, the girls' and boys' hockey teams did really well. I think we have like a state champion for skiing, swimming did really well, so just kudos to the Medfield High School sports teams, great, great winter season. I, too, attended the planning board session last night, and something that I do want to put on record is, we had people attend that live in the areas that are being selected and part of the MBTA Communities. They came in with, wait a minute, they left with, oh, we get it, okay, you know, so appreciate coming here, the information you shared makes sense, we understand now why you selected these areas. So I think, I can't stress enough, that took 90 minutes to have that meeting, we can't do that the night of the town meeting. So the more, and like I said, to the people that lived in the Pleasant Street, Medfield Gardens area, as well as the people that lived in on Maple Lane in the Medfield Village, I'm like, just please talk it up to your neighbors, so that any questions that they may need to want to flush out, they can flush out to Maria, they can flush out to Christine Brittany, as well as the Select Board, we're passionately involved. And more importantly, and Gus said this a few moments ago, planning board's been amazing. Like, they have put a lot of time, a lot of thought, and just appreciate everything that they've done. I went to the Affordable Housing Trust meeting last week, talked a lot about looking at the site for the potential Habitat Home on Surrey, nothing's been, it's going to take a while, you know, we've got to look at the location, we've got to look at what can be built, what can't be built. We also talked at length about Garrison Path and the easement that the Select Board is asking, and why we were asking for that. And I know Newton's still doing a lot of work with the Trinity Groups to see what we could do potentially for, I think, nine units up there. So it was a good meeting. And then Medfield Cares About Prevention had that meeting on Thursday, really great group of people, and the leadership group there is getting ready to finalize the grant paperwork, so I think we'll get a chance to review that in the coming weeks, and I think the deadline is end of April, if I'm not mistaken. I know Kathy's still on, she could correct me on that, but really good, and love that group, very passionate. And that is my report.
I went to the Medfield Foundation's Community Conversations and sat next to a fellow who is president of the Friends of the Dwight Derby House, and so as a result of that chance meeting, we ended up, I ended up publishing some things on my blog for him about the Dwight Derby House, and he sent, I connected him with, through that, he got connected with Bonnie Ren Burgess, an English teacher at the high school, and then today, he sent Bonnie and me a, I don't know where it was from, but apparently it was an account of Abraham Lincoln reading satire authored by George Derby of the Dwight Derby House. So that was really fun. Mr. George Derby apparently wrote satire under the name Squid Bob, and so that there's a newsletter now from the Dwight Derby that I recommend people get, because it was very nicely done. And that's it for me.
Ooh, can I do one more that I forgot to chime in, and I think, Pete, you were at this, the, maybe you said it, I missed it, the community event that MFI held and had...
That's the one I was just talking about.
Oh, you did, okay. What was the woman's name again?
Margaret Andrews.
Yes. Yeah, attended that, sorry.
She spoke about change, how to affect change. Actions on bills and warrants for payments, and anything else we should be doing, Chris, or can we go home?
You can go home. All right, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, aye.